... by Reverend James Peavy House of St. Mark's Episcopal Church. Everyone, please silence your cell phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Now, we will have a communications update from Lauren Montez, Director of Communication for the City of Beaumont. Welcome.
Good afternoon. We have the announcements for the week of December 5th. We invite you all to join us Thursday at 5:00 PM outside City Hall as we light the menorah to celebrate the first night of Hanukkah. The menorah lighting ceremony will feature traditional Hanukkah blessings, a festive atmosphere, and family-friendly activities for children. The state of the city is back. Join the City of Beaumont in the Beaumont Chamber of Commerce on December 14th from 11:00 to 1:30 at the Civic Center for a luncheon to hear updates and future plans from city officials and a special reveal you don't want to miss. Tickets are still available on the Chamber of Commerce website. The Jefferson Theater is showing more holiday movies than ever with a full lineup of Christmas classics. Check out the schedule on the Beaumont Events Facebook page or website to get in the holiday spirit. Be sure to check out Gobo Gifts for all your stocking stuffers and holiday shoppings. There's branded apparel to show local pride, and all proceeds benefit Cats Hill Marsh, a win-win for the city. The city's free Christmas tree recycling program is back. Drop your trees off at Rogers, Sprott, or Magnolia Park from December 26th to January 13th, and the solid waste department will properly dispose of them for you. Have you watched our latest podcast about holiday hosting tips? The Beaumont Beat talked to Health Inspector Justin Jackson about proper cooking temperatures and Mike Harris, Water and Sewer Director, about food disposal. Please help us keep fats, oils, and greases out of the sewers. You can give it a listen on our website, Facebook, YouTube, or wherever you stream podcasts. You have until December 20th to enter your best pictures in our Thankful for Beaumont photo contest. We want to see your best nature, arts, culture, and history shots with prizes for the winners. Water Company of America will be in Beaumont starting this week to perform an audit on the city's water, sewer, stormwater, and solid waste accounts to confirm that we are fairly and accurately billing our customers for utility services. The city has hired them as an independent contractor to spot check water meters across the city, which they will be assessing through November 2026. If any discrepancies are found, they will be addressed on an individual basis. They will also have an authorized letter on hand to share with citizens in the field about what they're doing. We appreciate your support and cooperation in advance as we continue to work to improve services to our customers. The city will be closed on December 25th for Christmas, and there will be no city council meeting December 26th. We hope you enjoy the time with family and friends. Thank you.
Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the Consent Agenda and Regular Agenda Items 1 and 11, or any other topics. Items 2 through 12 have already been heard in public hearing, therefore persons can't speak on these items. I'd like to remind folks that if you address council on something that's not on the agenda, we're not going to be able to respond at this point, but someone from city staff will follow up with you after your comments. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Good afternoon. I would like to address number 11 on the Regular Agenda about the public hearing on our Veterans Pass Program for the public transportation. I'm very excited today that we are finally able to come to an agreement and get our veterans to be able to ride public transportation for free. I want to thank city council for at least looking at this and hopefully that it will be passed today. I'm very passionate about our veterans and making sure that they get the proper benefits and recognition that they deserve. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Callis, 5375 Rosemary Drive, Beaumont, Texas, lifelong resident of Beaumont. I'm here today to try to get some new rules in consideration for the Red Tag Program. I'm working on four Red Tag houses right now, two that I own and two that I'm doing for other people that own them. And we have till December 28th when the work program runs out, and there's no option except for a temporary restraining order. Now, I have completed one house, and I paid for a temporary restraining order, and that one's behind me, but I have two more, and I had talked to Lancy Wood, who is doing a great job in that department, but there does not seem to be any leeway whatsoever. I suggested a 30-day extension for $150, just like we pay to the building code through the portal. It didn't. No, I'm not going to be able to have that as an option, so I'm putting it on the council. These Red Tag houses are resources, but I don't think they're looked at as resources. They're looked at as just, gosh, I can't even think of a good word, but nothing of value is how I would sum it up. So, these houses have value. I am a licensed real estate broker, and I've sold over 100 houses, and I like to sell affordable housing, and almost all the Red Tag houses would fall into that category. That's not 100% rule. I don't see why we only can go to a temporary restraining order which costs from $600 to $1,200. There's no other option. When I pull a regular permit as a licensed, not really licensed, as an authorized general contractor, I pay $37 as the base permit, and then in one year, I can pay another 37 and extend it. But since this work program, we got 120 days, and there's no option after that. So, to me, I don't see that that is any bad request. It seems like a reasonable request. These houses, the summary of last year, there was 400 Red Tag houses, 40 were completed. That's about 10%, and I would like to see more completed, and I would like to have an option besides a temporary restraining order. I believe that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Melissa Bradford, 17,000 North 11th Street. I just want to update the community about the outrageous additional corruption that's happening with my case. On Friday, Judge Baylor Wartham had scheduled a hearing on my case on Lindsey Linsus Parsons' motion to apportion attorney fees. Now, as I've said before, this judge lacks subject matter jurisdiction to even hear these issues regarding fee disputes and other matters because of the mandatory arbitration contracts that I've signed with this lawyer and with the second lawyer, who was Dick Lawford. It clearly states all cases must go to arbitration and cannot be heard in any court of legal proceeding. Yet this judge continues to break the law because Lindsey Linsus Parsons are listed as top donors to his campaign. He's basically accepting bribe money and ruling in her favor, knowing he don't even have power and authority to even be making decisions, so his decisions are therefore aborted. Okay. I hired an attorney within minutes before the hearing. My attorney, within two minutes, he's like, oh, this is nonsense. He's never seen so much corruption like everybody is saying. He requested a continuance. Of course, the judge rejected it without good cause. So, my thing else, why is he continuing to hear my case knowing he doesn't have the power of authority to? Hundred and some thousand dollars they're trying to give, split between Lindsey Linsus Parsons and Dick Lawford, for basically 30 days of doing practically nothing with my case. My attorney and I at the time requested a building statement. He waited 15 months before he even produced it to us, and then we had a request for it through mediation. We had to demand it, actually. He's changed his fees three times. One time, he said 16,400. Another time, it was 13,000. And then the day of my hearing, when they met my attorney, who wasn't afraid of him, all of a sudden, it reduced to $2,600. So, within a few minutes of the hearing, the lawyer said, okay, where's the money? They're telling the lawyer, they don't know what my money is. Okay, but you've been telling me all this time it's in the court registry. So, my friend and I went to the courthouse just to make sure there was no missing documents for my motion to transfer venue I filed on the 13th of November. The second page was missing, and then they locked us out of the room so we couldn't even go into the room to print the documents. I'm like, what the heck is going on? So, I mean, this is just becoming ridiculous. I had to reach out to protection agencies outside of Texas. Now that I'm a whistleblower, it's a group of us that had to do that because they don't have any protection agencies here for whistleblowers. We've also had to go through Dallas for protection because there's been a lot of instances where I've been followed, and I have the videos also. So, I just want them to know that.
Thank you.
Watch dogs on standby.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and all the staff, the Good Works Manager. Things going well this week. Attorney, thank you for being here, and all the councilmen, by golly. Anyway, I guess there's downtown Beaumont, I guess there's going to be some statements about the tax, excuse me, fund that will be recommended be built. I'm just reflecting on the last 60 years when Gateway Shopping Center was built because of the congested parking downtown, and then in 15, 20 years, we had Parkdale Mall, and then slowly, things have deteriorated downtown Beaumont. And what we need, really need to do is just talk to each property owner and see what their plans are and see if we can generate something from them. I noticed that some of the attorney office buildings seem to be empty now down on Park Street, or that may be nature's. Yeah, I think it's nature's. Anyway, Beaumont, downtown Beaumont seems to get a lot of festivals, and it seemed like we need to concentrate on entertaining the citizens and have them come downtown and enjoy the surroundings, and then we, and that might generate more restaurants, other facilities that would enhance downtown. But it's a very difficult study downtown Beaumont because in my lifetime, that's been the emphasis, is trying to improve downtown Beaumont. I remember the day they moved the railroad where we could go under the track, where we didn't, we weren't held up and had to go out to 4th Street or 11th Street to get around the train. Anyway, Beaumont's been a good town. It's our town, and it's a wonderful world. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of consent agenda. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Turner.
Mr. Manager, for item number C, our staff, I notice we're considering authorizing the acceptance of a boundary line agreement with the Beaumont Country Club. I had a citizen ask me, can someone kind of expound upon exactly what are we doing?
Yes, sir. We're doing some construction there with the Colliers Ferry Pump Station, and because of the work that borders the Beaumont Country Club, we needed to know exactly where the boundary was between the city property and the Beaumont Country Club. Unfortunately, the last time that property was surveyed was very early 1900s, and the surveyors were unable to find any of the boundary markers. So, rather than undertake to resurvey the entirety of the Beaumont Country Club plat, which would have been quite extensive and cost a good amount of money, we entered into an agreement with them to where we're both agreeing to the line where it borders us only. So, we're not getting into the rest of their property or having to survey the entire perimeter of it.
Yes, sir. And a follow-up, just to bring to the manager's attention. I've walked that area with Councilmember Getz before, and I kind of share the same concern with the Collier Ferry Pump Station, with what we're trying to develop downtown on that riverfront, just the imagery of that industrial site. Maybe we can do something to offset how it looks, what can match what we're actually trying to do because our riverfront actually goes all the way to the facility we're talking about right now, the golf course. So, if we can do something to kind of make it all flush together, I think that would be good to kind of start looking into that now.
Yes, Councilman Durio.
On item B, as far as the stand, anybody know if they worked out any of the kinks? I'm still getting notifications that the City of Needland is going to be closed, or a street is closed in Port Arthur, and I have some of my constituents saying they're, it's kind of frustrating, and they're going to block that number because they don't need that type of information. And I was wondering, is it going to be like that, or is that some kinks that need to be worked out, or if someone is here from Captain Oknacek, maybe he can explain it, if that's
Well, I did ask them after the last time that this came up, and they were investigating it. We did get a new system, a new vendor, and in that transition, it's quite a bit different from my other one. We've had some issues. Other jurisdictions are also using the system, and apparently there's some carryover from what one jurisdiction is doing. It should not come into anywhere outside of Needland, and it is, and we're still tracking down why that's happening to certain people. It's not happening to everybody. We don't know why it's happening to just a few people.
But they're going to fix it.
They're working on it. We're investigating it. I can't promise that it's going to be fixed. I sure hope people be at least a little patient with us because, as you say, if they cut off that notification, they won't be getting the other ones that we send out that might be important to citizens of Beaumont.
That's what I've been telling. Hopefully, we can maybe put out that information just to be patient. We don't want you to block that number, so when you really need some information and can't get it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Captain.
And I have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On item E, can I have someone explain the benefits to this Open Gov budgeting and
As Ms. Wright is coming, I want to remind council that this was approved last meeting, so a lot of that was discussed last meeting. This is just to add a pay recipient. We are actually using a third, getting it through a third-party vendor. That information was left out of the agenda memo and resolution, and it's required for auditing purposes, but definitely let Ms. Wright answer that.
Okay.
So, and actually, Cheryl may be a better person to answer the questions that you're asking, but what it will allow us to do, it will tie into our financial system, and it will allow us to create, I would say, more advanced budgeting and allow us to handle all the zero-dollar budgeting that we've discussed over the last several months. It will allow finance to be able to do a more, I guess, intricate budget and be able to move account information around.
Yep. She's basically got it. Essentially, we've been doing our budget, which is, you know how big the document is, on Excel and Word, and I think it's time for us to move forward, and this will definitely allow us to have a lot of efficiencies in what we're doing and make sure that everything's correct and, you know, in good order when we present it to you. Also, it allows for transparency onto the website, so that will be an additional, you know, positive to getting the Open Gov. But again, you passed it, I think, last meeting, and this is just to add the third-party vendor.
And also, council member, the city through GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, they require that the city publishes a budget within a certain format. So, this new program will allow us to submit our final budget document in that format and also to apply for annual awards from that organization.
Okay. Sounds very efficient. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? A motion is carried. Mr. Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, consider a resolution approving a contract for the Phase III renovation of the municipal court building located at 700 Orleans, and comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
So moved for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for item number one. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council, consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a scrap recycling collection center within the Light Industrial District for property located at 565 Orange Avenue. In a joint public hearing on November 20, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended SO to approve the request with the following conditions. One, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pretreatment, and our FOG program. Two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes. Three, shall install an eight-foot fence, I'm sorry, eight-foot wood masonry or metal fence around the perimeter of the property if materials are stored outside of a building. Four, storage of any kind should not encroach onto any public right-of-way. And five, shall adhere to all state statutes, local ordinances, and required licenses for metal recycling entity. And that's the recommendation.
All right. Is there a motion for item number two?
So moved to approve with conditions.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Council, consider a request for a specific use permit to allow heavy equipment dealership and repair shop within the General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling District for property located at 3265 East Tex Freeway, and it comes with the recommendation of approval from P&amp;Z with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements for the city's backflow, pretreatment, and our FOG program. Two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes. Three, equipment shall not encroach or be displayed within any eastment or right-of-way. And four, shall install a six-foot wide landscaping buffer along the East Tex Freeway and parking lot in accordance with Section 28.04.006 landscaping and screening requirements. All parts of the landscaping must be installed on private property, not to encroach into text dots right-of-way.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Approved with conditions. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number three. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council, consider a request for an amended specific use permit for a new classroom building within the Residential Single Family Dwelling District for property located at 8200 Highway 105. Comes with the recommendation of approval, SO vote from planning commissions with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pretreatment, and our FOG program. And two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes.
Is there a motion for item number four?
So moved for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number four. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council, consider a request for a specific use permit and rezone from residential single-family dwelling to general commercial multiple-family dwelling district to allow a floor covering store for property located at 50525th Street. At a joint public hearing held on November 20, 23, the Planning Commission recommended 501 to deny the request for that permit, and this item comes with the recommendation of denial of the ordinance.
All right. Is there a motion for item number five?
I'll move to approve the specific use permit. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. This is going to, any discussion, and it will require two votes.
Yes, so the item is for a specific use permit and a rezone. Technically, you should probably do the rezone first and then do the specific use permit.
Do we need a motion?
But you can do either way. So, the councilman has made a motion to approve the specific use permit, but then, okay. And so, after that, after that motion is processed, then there would still be a requirement for the rezone.
So, there is a motion. So there is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz?
At the planning and zoning meeting, the commission recommended 5-0 with one abstention to deny this request, and you're asking that it be approved. Why is your, uh, what's the basis of your going against the recommendation of planning and zoning commission?
Couple of different reasons. One, I've talked to numerous neighbors, um, that are tied to this property, uh, that are in support of this. Number two, I know the investors on this property and I have seen firsthand the, the impact they've made in this community, and I believe that they will, uh, do the same thing on this piece of property.
And Mayor, if you would permit, Councilman Getz, I'd like to speak to it also since I've seconded, if you allow me. But, uh, uh, it's my understanding too that there was some confusion at P&amp;Z. I know one, uh, committee member that abstained from voting. I know another one that later admitted that there was some confusion about parking. I think there was a, um, a misunderstanding that customers would be walking across the street, which would create a hazard for pedestrians. But after talking to the owners of the property, they are putting a parking lot, which we know that. But there's no intention for customers to be walking across, traversing, um, old Calder there, or, yeah, so Calder. So I think there was some confusion. And this property, if you drive out and look at it, which I'm sure you have, it's less than desirable. So any improvement that would be made, I think, would enhance that street. And if you drive down that street, I think there are other properties that appear to be, um, again, I, it, I, I think it would be an improvement. It would be a, it would be a help to the community.
Mr. Boone, was there any, uh, negative, uh, comments about this from any citizens that, uh, that they did not want to have this, uh, zoned in this manner?
Yes, sir, there were. And I would ask the city clerk if she could scroll to the zoning map. Because again, originally, the staff had recommended against the rezoning, and of course, the commission has recommended against it as well. And the reason being primarily, as you can see, 25th Street wrapping around to 24th Street is a cohesive neighborhood of single-family homes that both face 25th Street. And so the concern from us is while there are commercial uses across the street, commercial zones adjacent, the concern is if you start to rezon the properties, um, you know, whether they be here 24th Street or going down into Calder Place, 23rd Street, or even going west along Calder to Thomas Avenue, uh, or Thomas Road, rather, our recommendation is to keep them single-family in order to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood.
Well, Mr. Bailey, if I can follow up, uh, if you drive down that particular stretch of Calder as it approaches Lucas, it's, it's heavily commercial, uh, on the buildings that face Calder. Now, this building is, does not face Calder. It faces 25th Street. It's a house. But it is a pretty heavily commercial area already. My question is, if this is allowed to pass, if other citizens or developers want to further encroach along 25th Street, wouldn't they have to come back before council for specific use permits in their own right? Don't, doesn't council still have the ability to control any encroachment into that residential neighborhood? Uh, I understand the concern that maybe we're opening the door, but wouldn't council always have the ability to shut that door?
They would have to make the same application that they're making here to rezon. The concern is that, you know, the argument against, in other words, if the house, the next house across 25th comes in and recommends for a rezoning, you know, would, would you be able to deny that? And if so, uh, how to justify it?
Could, could the justification be that this house, as it exists now, is, is kind of falling down? And, y- you know, it's actually gonna help improve the neighborhood?
You could make that argument. Again, if it's not actively used. The concern, though, again, is, is, uh, kind of the creep along Calder Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Councilman Turner, then Councilman Felschall, and then Councilman Neal, if you still-
Actually, he had his hand up first.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, this kind of goes along to, on the lines of something we discussed in the past, and I think we did take this out of the budget that I wasn't in support of. It's real important, we kind of have a cohesive outlook on what we want, what to be zoned, similar to the apartments on Major Drive. If we don't have an overall plan and a map on where we want to go, it's kind of, we'll keep making these decisions, and it'll look case by case. I kind of really think that we should have more of a cohesive, you know, outlook on what we want, whether it be an entertainment district, uh, whether it be a commercial district or a single-family. We need to kind of be all on the same page because the case by case, it can kind of look like it's biased to one and we're not the same with others. So I know you did have it in the budget, but this is just another example of we're in the same situation again because we kind of don't have that cohesive plan. I know we got zoning, but when we talked earlier this year, the last time we did our zoning, Mr. Boone, do you remember what you, the last time we did go over?
I'm s- the last time we had a rezoning on Major?
No, just, uh, overall zoning concept of our city. I know you said it was a while ago that we actually did it, but-
Right, so the, the last time we had a comprehensive plan was over 20 years ago. So we're definitely due for one. The comprehensive plan, to your point, is to guide these kinds of decisions, not to direct, but to guide. But to your point, it's been too long.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's just another case of we're, we're kind of going along the same lines again. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Neal?
Councilman Getz, one of the other big differences on this is that this piece of property actually ties into a commercial piece of property next door. And that property owner supports this project. The other thing I want to say is this house that's there now is in terrible shape. And being right there next to another cur- commercial piece of property, I, I find it very upsetting that staff is so against trying to revitalize this. Not likely have people just lined up in this in town, in this town to invest. And so, like I said from the get-go, I think that this is a very good project for Beaumont, and I have no doubt these people will do well with it.
Thank you, Councilman Neal. Councilman Felschall.
And, and one of the things I'd like to just remind all of us, because I, I know we've all witnessed this. When we go to other communities, let's say you go down to Needle into Boston Avenue, and it's not uncommon for communities now to take older buildings, whether it's commercial or residential, and revitalize it and turn it into a boutique or something else that does nothing but enhance the community. And when you look at this neighborhood, uh, this street, a, a number of these homes are in disrepair. And so it's obvious they're older, and I think it could use some revitalizing. And what do we do with the next time, with the next, across the street that comes up? For me, what would weigh heavily upon my decision is what type of business is it? If it complements what's happening, we're for it. If it's not, we vote it down. But again, I would encourage everyone to just think of the communities you've looked at where they have taken older homes and turned them into boutiques.
Councilman Getz?
Yeah, Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Felschall, I understand what you're saying, and that was part of the reason that I had my comments. However, Councilman Felschall, you just said, yeah, it depends on what type of business that you are going to be putting in there. But once you rezon it, um, and I don't know if this is a question for the city attorney or for Mr. Boone, but what if you're okay with the, the particular use that this buil- business is going to put in that location, which is a floor shop, a display for floorwares? But somebody wants to come along at some time in the future? Maybe they, the floor shop goes out of business and they sell it, uh, and somebody wants to put a vape shop in there. Would that have to come before council for a specific use permit? Or will it already be, uh, permissible as allowed by right because of the decision that we may make here today?
So what they're requesting is a rezoning to general commercial multifamily dwelling two, which requires a specific use permit for just about every type of use. So let's say this floor shop did go in, and a couple of years from now, they wanted to change it to a vape shop, for example. They would have to come back before the city council to make that request.
And that's the point that I was trying to focus on, is that the council will always still have the ability to shut the door. I understand your concern that we may be opening the door by allowing this to go through. I just wanted you and the public to understand that council still has the ability to shut the door if it looks like it's going to be an unacceptable use. And I actually support what y'all are trying to do. I'm just trying to draw it out into a discussion so that we can, you know, make sure that everybody understands in that neighborhood that it still has to come back before council, before something can, something that they don't perhaps won't could happen.
Any other discussion? In that case, then we're gonna have a vote on number, out of, agenda item number five regarding the specific use permit that has been-
Need to finish the motion and the second on the SUP.
Okay.
After discussions.
There's two votes, correct, so we need to clarify.
It's two votes, so I think, uh-
So do you want to do the-
First and second. And so that was for the specific use permit. So Neil, uh, Councilman Neil and Councilman Felschall. And then we'll, we'll have to, you'll have to call for a second motion on the rezon.
Right.
Just for, for cleanness, just probably do the rezon first next time.
I move to approve the rezon.
Second.
Okay, now, for cleanliness, may I have a vote for the zoning permit for agenda item number-
I'm sorry, who's second for the zone?
We're gonna vote on that SUP first, and then we're-
We got two motions.
No, we got one.
Yes, they are. It's easy to do, so, so we will vote on the specific use first.
Yes.
All those in favor, please signify-
I was trying to get him to do it.
Thank you. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. For the second one, which will be the zoning permit, which has already been moved and seconded.
Who's second, I'm sorry?
Felschall.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Okay, now we're gonna do number six, and we'll get to do-
All over again.
Same thing.
Council consider a request for a specific use permit and rezon from neighborhood commercial district to general commercial, multiple-family dwelling two district to allow boarding house for property located at 3875 Laurel Street. And at a joint public hearing by P&amp;Z, uh, it was recommended 6-0 to approve the request with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pre-treatment, and R-Fog program. Two, no permanent structures or appetitosis, appetitosis shall be placed within the easement property. Three, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building, engineering, and fire codes.
All right, and we're gonna need two motions. One dealing with the zoning, the rezoning first, and then, uh, the second would be specific use. So is there, uh, a motion for item number six?
So moved for approval.
For the zoning?
Rezoning.
Rezoning.
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. And then on the specific use permit, we will need a motion.
Move to approve the specific use permit with the conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the specific use permit. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Council consider a request for an amended specific use permit to expand the Pregnancy Resource Clinic within the residential, multiple-family dwelling, highest-density district for property located at 3740 Laurel Street. And it comes with the 6-0, uh, approval requ- uh, from the Pl- Planning and Zoning Commission with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pre-treatment, and R-Fog program. And two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve the amended specific use permit with the conditions.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number seven. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider a request for a rezoning from light industrial district to port development district for property located at 1200 Park Street. And, um, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended 5-0 to approve the request, uh, for rezoning.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number nine?
Council consider a request for rezoning from commercial manufacturing district to port development district for property located at 412 Emmett Avenue, 1353 through 1399 Park Street, and properties just north, north and east of 1353 Park Street. And it comes with the recommendation of 5-0 to approve the request for zon- uh, rezoning.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval for item number nine. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 10?
Council consider a request for rezoning from residential, multiple-family dwelling, highest-density district to heavy industrial district or more restrictive zoning district for property located at 2055 South Street. And it comes with the recommendation from Planning Commission 6-0 to deny the request for rezoning.
Is there a motion for item number 10?
Move to request the denial of the, uh, request for zoning.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the denial for item number 10. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify, all those in favor of item number 10 denying it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager?
Council to conduct a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend the Qualified Veterans Pass program. May if you would open a public hearing for us?
Yes, the public hearing is now open.
I don't have anyone, Mayor.
All right.
Speak again? I think Ms. Williams wants to speak again.
Okay.
So again, I'm grateful for this public hearing today on this, um, very much needed, um, topic that we're gonna be talking about, the Veterans Pass program, so that they can ride public transportation. We had started this about, um, around Veterans Day, around the beginning of November, and we were grateful that the city of Beaumont took into this.
Yeah, that's gonna be the next one.
Yeah, this is for the Veteran Pass.
Yes.
Yeah.
He went ahead of himself, so we can go back to the other one.
We're on the Veteran Pass. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is the Veteran Pass.
We can go back. Go ahead.
Continue.
Okay. Okay, add about 30 seconds to my time, so, anyway. Anyway, um, no, but seriously, um, we are, we started this about, um, about the beginning of November, around Veterans Day, and we were very grateful that the city of Beaumont was able to, to listen to our veterans. Um, we usually have four veteran stand downs, um, a year. They're held here in Beaumont, Port Arthur, Orange, and Jasper now. So we're able to get our veterans the, um, benefits and also the supplies and resources that they need throughout the year. Myself being a veteran of 21 years, um, this speaks really deep to my heart, and I hope that we can finally get some transport- that we can finally get some transportation means for our veterans that are not able to maybe have their own personal vehicles and that public transportation will be available to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Charlie Crabbe?
Hello, Mayor, Counsel, Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive. Veterans, yes, they're, they've become very a part of our, our, our nation. And here, and as you know, the world is in disruption and the, I think the U S has become the police force for the, for the world. And we've got to show our appreciation for the veterans that have, have gone out and now it's a volunteer system and, and have enjoy, enjoying, joined the armed forces and taken their schooling to become guardians of our, our nation throughout the world. And as you know, our armed forces are becoming more automated, so we definitely need these people to, to join up and be ready to, to protect our country because there's the, the, whatever you call those guys, the terrorists are all over the world now and they, they're pretty mobile. And of course, they've letting them come across the border now, and they may have, they've shut that off a little bit, but anyway, there was a concern about that. Anyway, going back to our past, and I'm sure we're talking about the, the bus pass transportation where qualified veterans should be able to show his, show his identification and ride the bus at any time. Now, if the bus is, system gets overwhelmed with veterans, we, we may, surely they'll have to look at the system again, but I think looking at our bus system, they should be able to handle this and let the veterans come and go. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this. We're going to open the public hearing for the next item, and then we'll be dealing with agenda item number 11 after.
The reinvestment zone?
Okay, Counsel, to conduct a public hearing on the creation of a reinvestment zone.
All right, the meeting is now open? All right, the meeting is closed. So is there a motion for, may we, you read agenda item number 11, please?
Okay, Mayor. My number 11 says, Counsel, conduct a public hearing, which we've done, and consider an ordinance to amend the qualified veterans pass program.
That's correct. Is there a motion for item number 11?
Move to approve. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for approval for item number 11. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Councilman Durian?
Mr. Boone, I think I mentioned too before, you said you're going to be working with the, partnering with the Veterans Administration Office, but, and I said this before, just realized that not all veterans are registered with the Veterans Administration's Office, but they all have access to their DD 214. And so that should be sufficient for them to get a pass, correct?
Yes, sir. So we are working with, we want to make it as easy as possible to make sure that all veterans can take advantage of the program. So again, we'll work with the Veterans Administration to, again, make it as easy as possible. And once we get that assurance, then the pass will be issued.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 11, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, will you take us into the work session?
Yes, Mayor. Discussion to obtain guidance for the prioritization of work related to the fiscal year 2024 CIP item for sidewalk repair. We have Mr. Bart Koak here to discuss that with us.
Got some new controllers here today, I think, so. There we go. So I wanted to come and talk to Counsel about the sidewalk repair today. In the current CIP, we have a million dollars budgeted for sidewalk repair for fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2028. Improvements and repairs to the sidewalk infrastructure throughout the city will be identified on an annual basis. Emphasis will be given selecting areas that will impact the highest number of citizens by connecting and/or repairing existing sidewalk infrastructure around schools and school-related destinations. So as you know, we did have a master plan for sidewalks included originally in the budget, which we did not fund. So in the absence of that plan, I'm going to walk you through what our internal staff plan is to allocate this money. So how do we move forward? We're focusing on schools. There's a lot of schools in town, so the initial focus is to begin with the public elementary schools throughout the city. So the map shows all of those around the city of Beaumont. For each of the schools, we will draw a one-half mile radius around each of the schools, and we're going to conduct a initial desktop inventory, beginning with a inventory that's provided by the recent road assessment survey by IMS, along with a rough assessment condition, rough assessment, condition assessment by IMS for those sidewalks. So you can see the circles around May Jones Clark in this example. Anything green is a sidewalk in good condition. Blue is fair condition. Yellow is poor and red is very poor. So you can see in this case, we've got sidewalks around three sides of May Jones Clark and some sparse sidewalks within the radius around that school.
Bart, before you leave that page, I apologize, but I want to be able to keep up with you. The sidewalks that are very poor condition and red, you may not be able to answer this question, but can you help us understand, because I know how expensive it is, how far would a million dollars, I mean, what, what kind of money? Yeah, you're smiling already. So I'm just trying to understand, because I know when a citizen hears a million dollars, that doesn't go far when it comes to sidewalks, not as far as you think it would. Can you help us understand what it would take to, like this one circle, to address this issue?
We're, we're hoping that anything that already has a sidewalk will, will be on the lower end of, of having to invest money to get it in good condition, because hopefully the grades won't be that far off in terms of ADA. You've already got a sidewalk there, there shouldn't be utilities in the way, but there could be. There, there could be problems with that we have to address. The things that really drive our costs up are meeting ADA, if we have a lot of driveways that go through the sidewalks, path of travel, if we have utilities that are in the way, and in particular, if we have open ditching there, that can drive the cost way up. So that's where we have to just assess the area and, and make some good decisions as to how best to, to allocate that money.
Well, the reason I bring this up is because we know that disappointment is unmet expectations, and I just don't want the city to be, you know, we, we over, they over expect, because I don't want them disappointed. And I just know how, again, a million dollars doesn't go far when it comes to sidewalks. When you think about it, it sounds like a lot, but it's a very expensive project.
Yes, sir. It can be very expensive. To, to kind of jump ahead and summarize to some extent, our plan is to come up with a recommendation of the exact schools and work that we feel will fit within the million dollars, come back to council, present that, so everybody will know before we go out for bid, what work we're considering and how much that, that will actually.
There it is. Thank you.
Wake up. So the desktop inventory I mentioned, what that means is we're going to assess the information on hand electronically, the existing sidewalks, signage within that half-mile radius, any existing crosswalks, two-year crash history within that radius, the number of driveways that are on each of those roads, any signalized intersections that are within that area, and then the drainage infrastructure. So we'll have to gather all of that for the school.
Councilman Getz?
Can I suggest that another factor be put in there? I don't know that it's necessarily desktop, but, you know, if you're looking at first prioritizing elementary schools, I would encourage someone to go out on a school day before classes are supposed to start and see how much need there is because of pedestrian traffic walking to that school, because I can tell you, I'm not going to put my seven-year-old little girl out on the sidewalk, even if it's just a half mile to walk to school. You know, I'm going to find a way to get her to school. But I think that it's great to try to build some sidewalks or repair some sidewalks, but let's make sure we're focusing on where there's actual need, okay?
And for clarity, I don't think Councilman Getz has a seven-year-old daughter at this point. That we don't.
Congratulations.
Granddaughter.
Okay, yeah. Once we get down to a field assessment, we can try to assess pedestrian traffic. It is very difficult. It's easier to, to put cat, traffic counters up and count cars. It's a lot harder with technology to, to count people, but we'll, we'll definitely make an effort on that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Bart, the, that million dollars, is this, that's a total?
Yes, sir. For the year.
For one year.
For one year.
But we're not going to be able to get all this done in one year, so we're going to, next year, come back with another million, correct?
Well, if all this is to fix the sidewalks throughout town, no. This, this is a beginning.
Okay. Make sure you remember my part, Tom.
Yes.
Counsel, right now in the CIP, we have a million dollars over the next several years projected. Yeah, each year over the next several years.
All the way through 2028. A full five-year CIP has a million in each year for sidewalks currently. So after the desktop inventory has been completed, then we'll sit down internally with staff and we'll make a preliminary selection of projects across town with a goal that the work would be within that million dollars. And we'll take a rough cut at it at that point. And then we'll go out and physically survey those selected areas. We'll identify necessary utility conflicts and we'll verify that existing sidewalk and ramp condition that we had gotten from the IMS survey.
So Bart, what, what will you do in areas where there's ditching? You have to put pipes in or would you have to do the sidewalk on the side of the ditch or?
It depends. If there's enough right of way, you could put a sidewalk to the back of the ditch. That is, that does exist in areas. If you can't do that and you have to enclose, then you're looking at a large expense. But also, we can hopefully look and focus and try to avoid as much as possible putting the sidewalk where the ditch is. Maybe one road over or maybe the other side of the road doesn't have a ditch, we'll, we'll have to work with that.
Okay.
But the ditching will eat up a lot of money quick if we have to enclose. Once we finish the field assessment, we'll collect all the data together and compile plans that can be put out for bid. And again, I don't have it on the slide, but we would come back to council with whatever our suggested path forward is, just like we did with the recent road rehab selection of streets. We'll do an engineering estimate to make sure it's within those funds. This whole process from the desktop inventory through the bid package, we're expecting to take six to nine months working with internal staff. So as I just stated, it's going to take some time to get through the planning process. So while we are doing this, we would like to propose to council that we pick a single overall project to spend the million dollars in funds in FY 2024 while we do that assessment of the sidewalks around the elementary schools. So as you know, the Fennet Road sidewalk project by Beaumont United was included in the fiscal year 2024 Community Investment Plan. We submitted that to Tech dot for consideration under the Transportation Alternatives Grant Program, and unfortunately, we weren't awarded funding under that program in 2023. The project, the Fennet Road sidewalk project's already put together at a high level because of having to do so for the grant submission. The project will impact a high number of citizens by connecting or repairing existing sidewalk infrastructure on Fennet Road, serving Beaumont United and the surround, surrounding neighborhood. The estimated project cost for this is 915,000, so it actually fits within the budgeted amount that we have. The scope of work for this includes a five-foot sidewalk improvement along both sides of Fennet Road from Sarah Street to Edmonds, and then on the south side from Edmonds to Fourth Street. The proposed sidewalk improvement includes ADA ramps, driveway removal and replacement in order to meet ADA requirements. Existing crosswalks will be improved with new pavement markings and signage, and we'll probably add an additional crosswalk there at Edmonds where we discontinue going to Fourth along the north side of, of Fennet Road. So that's, that's our proposal to you, to get your, your input back on. This would allow us, while we're doing all that groundwork, to put together sidewalks in pieces around the elementary schools, to get a project done that will benefit the citizens this fiscal year, and then have a plan prepared to go forward into '25 that can go to bid early in, in that fiscal year for the sidewalks.
Councilman Getz?
I like the idea of getting the sidewalk along Fennet Road. It's been something that's been talked about for a long time. But I also want to point out that a sidewalk is very much needed along Phelan, connecting Westbrook to the many townhouses and apartments that exist on Pinchback at the corner of Dowling and Phelan and adjacent to that. And there's, there's so much pedestrian traffic from students that walk from their home to Westbrook in the morning and reverse in the afternoon. I know that because I live on Phelan, I see them. Also, there are segments of sidewalks along Phelan that have been built because the construction occurred after the council passed an ordinance that requires new construction to have sidewalks, but they're not connected. It would be cost-effective to go ahead and finish that out along the empty lots that still exist and go ahead and build that sidewalk out. Personally, I'd rather see that done than start trying to do elementary schools, because most parents will allow their high school age students to walk if they're within the portion, portion of the boundaries that they can't get bus service to school. You, you're just considered to have more responsibility, I guess, as a teenager than as a six or seven-year-old, and there is a lot of pedestrian traffic from students that walk along that street. So I understand, you know, you're starting, your, your, your thought was to start with elementary school. I would encourage you to also think about, instead of that, once you do Fennet Road, come back and do Phelan to allow Westbrook students to have a similar sidewalk.
We, we can look at that. The first thing we're going to do. We we can look at that. The first thing we're gonna need to do is define exactly where we want to put the sidewalks. We did look at it. There are sidewalks from Westbrook to um, to Major. On that, we just looked at Major to Dowlin, and to do both sides of that similar to Fennet was uh, 1.315 million.
Just do one side. I don't want a sidewalk in front of my house.
That's the pieces that we're going to have to to talk about. In order to address a project like that, we're gonna have to define what what the actual requirements are, and then we can work on on estimates.
The the sidewalks that are already there are on the south side of Phelan?
It it, yeah, there's, it goes in place. There's one bridge that's in the median for pedestrians, for some reason, we noticed on that. But yeah, if we define it, then we can work up the cost and and pitch it.
Councilman Turner.
Uh, just for clarity, um, I'm pretty certain, but I think staff can confirm this. BISD students and students in general that ride the public transportation system within a one-mile radius, whether it be elementary, middle school, or high school, those kids do not get bused. So I think that's an important factor to actually discuss.
Actually, uh, I was asked to to check with BISD. It's one mile for the elementary schools, uh, unless the neighborhood's been deemed hazardous. They have a rubric to look at extremely busy streets and et cetera and and narrow what that that one mile is. But it's one mile for elementary schools and two miles for secondary uh, schools, middle school and high school.
And I think getting that data is very important, but I also want to state another fact. When you look at the income of parents who deal with Beaumont ISD, it's a fairly low income. A lot of those parents at eight in the morning, they have no choice but to be at work. So it's unfortunate, but some of those kids do have to walk to school. And you know, the older brother or sister are kind of looking after the little brother or sister. And I've seen it on several occasions, even working with truancy, if I picked up kids and brought them to school, that that's something that happens all throughout the city of Beaumont. And the second thing is, it's great we're talking about these sidewalks, but even with Washington Boulevard, we recently spent a tremendous amount of money, this council before, prior to me, to getting that project approved. But we're not maintaining our sidewalks. You have kind of grass that's literally growing over the sidewalks, and that was a recently new project. And that's kind of happened over there in Detroit and Pollard area. If I'm not mistaken, it's covered some of the sidewalks. So I think it's just as much important to look at, you know, maintenance as well because we're gonna be going in circles, coming right back behind it, fixing it, if we're not looking at routine maintenance as well.
Right. We depend by city ordinance, we depend on the property owners to maintain the sidewalk in front of their property, so.
So you 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 just said, Bart, what I wanted to talk about. Current- currently under city ordinances, it is up to the property owners to maintain the sidewalks. And we have started requiring new construction in commercial uh, areas to put sidewalks in. I do have a bit of a concern if we're going to start improving sidewalks that are existing but have come into disrepair, that the city's going to now start picking winners and losers with regard to sidewalk maintenance. You know, that starts making things more of political questions. I hope you can find objective uh, an objective uh, matrix to uh, make your decisions because you start requiring most property owners to maintain their own sidewalks. But here comes the city and say, no, this property owner, uh, we're gonna fix your sidewalk out in front of your house for you. That could cause some discord in our community.
Councilman Durio.
Bart, what um, what would be required to, I don't know, give the go-ahead on the Fennet Road project?
I I just need a a kind of consensus from council today. If y'all are generally in agreement with that, you'll see it again with a bid package.
Okay. And um, what what type of timeframe would that be?
Uh, we're hoping to to be able to get it done substantially within this fiscal year. Once we get the bid package together, then we'll have a better idea when we bring it to you. But we hope to get, if not get it done, get it substantially done by the end of the fiscal year. Be the goal.
Councilman Fellshaw.
Bart, you mentioned that we hold the uh, property owner responsible to maintain the sidewalk. If they're not, what recourse do we have? Are we able to find them or or do we just have to send out a crew to do it ourselves?
Well, the current, not that we've ever made anybody tear out a sidewalk, to my knowledge, but uh, Chapter 14, it states that it's the duty of the owner, agent, charge, or tenant of the property of budding any sidewalk to keep it in good and safe condition, free from defects. It says that any such party who fails to comply shall be primarily liable in damages uh, for any injuries. It says that failure to construct, reconstruct, or repair sidewalk or parkway shall constitute a misdemeanor.
Does it speak? What about speaking to the the issue that Councilman Turner brought up about grass growing over and it not being maintained?
Well, that's one thing. I mean, they should, they should maintain it free of vegetation limbs, any any blockages for you to navigate the sidewalk. But the ordinance currently, which I think was put in in the 50s, actually goes further and requires the property owner to actually maintain the physical condition of the sidewalk. So that that would mean if you had a large oak tree and it and it tore up the sidewalk and lifted it up, say in Old Town or or somewhere, then you'd be required under this ordinance to to replace the sidewalk. Again, I don't know in my tenure with the city that that we've ever done anything of that nature. I I would recommend that we revisit Chapter 14 at some point. I'd be more comfortable with requiring citizens to maintain the condition of the sidewalk in terms of edging, sweeping, keeping vegetation and tree limbs on it, off of it, so that you can walk it, but not require them to actually physically replace the sidewalk, at least for residential um, properties.
Agreed. I don't, I don't, I agree with that 100%. Uh, I guess for now, I'm just wondering if the grass is growing over it, we're in the, we're on, in essence, we're losing the sidewalk. Can we force the the property owner to go out there and clean this up? Can we?
In accordance with the ordinance, yes, but we've never done that.
But I've. Perhaps it's time for a new beginning. Can we, can we find them if they're not? I don't expect them to pour new concrete. I don't, I think that's reaching, but to cut the grass? Yeah, cut your grass. So I would encourage the staff to go out there and tick at these people and make them cut the grass, or we lose the sidewalk. And it's the other citizens that are suffering in the community because they can't walk down the sidewalk.
Councilman Durio and then Councilman Getz.
I've had uh, folks call me about uh, for example, Florida Street Sidewalk, and that's Bingman, that's a preschool, and they couldn't walk. But staff contacted the owner and uh, and they went out and, you know, it took them about a week, but they went out and they cleared it once they were contacted uh, by staff. And also, I would like to uh, and I would like to see us go ahead and and uh, push forward with this Fennet Road project unless someone on the council, I don't know, if, I think that's the way the council would want to go, unless I'm wrong.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Durio. Councilman Getz.
The problem with what you're suggesting, uh, Councilman Fellshaw, is that a lot of times property owners are unknown. It's a vacant lot. It's an abandoned lot. It's something that's tied up in an estate. It might be something owned by the county or by the city.
So that at that place, we have to do it.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, and I agree with that, yeah. Absolutely. So we've got to maintain the sidewalks for the sake of our citizens, so, yeah, good point. But I would say the staff has to go out there and do it then.
Councilman Turner.
I recommend that soon, if we can, bring that ordinance back forward so we can tighten it up and make the proper adjustments we need to do to move forward. And my second question was, we've talked about a million dollars, it doesn't go far. Can foundations or companies make uh, contributions for certain areas if that's what they choose or that's not an option?
I defer to the city manager.
I would think they could make a donation to the city for a project. They do it for other projects, other things that we do. The attorney have to address the legality of that. But I I do have a question about sidewalks. Are these sidewalks on our property or private property?
It's either within a right-of-way, um, or we'll have to obtain a right-of-way, but we don't own the property in the vast majority of cases. We own a right-of-way.
Yeah, and some, especially if some commercial, Chris jumped in, some commercial properties, we require them to install a sidewalk. Um, so it's not necessarily on.
I know, typically it's on right-of-way.
Right.
Almost always. Responsibility. So I I do have a question about us requiring private property owners to be liable for sidewalks that are on our right-of-way.
Which is probably why we've never prosecuted.
Okay. So yeah, I think that's a, an, a, a issue we need to address when we look at this ordinance. That's something that's not nearly typical anymore.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. If uh, Councilman Neal.
Kind of piggybacking off of Councilman Turner's question. So I had a specific neighborhood request on whether or not they could put sidewalks in themselves. But that being a city easement, how would that work?
I would think they could put them in.
And how would they get permission?
Planning and zoning.
That that's how they would do it. So basically, we would provide the specs, specifications in the, in terms of how they're, how they're designed, how they're installed. And um, but it is, it's certainly allowed and and as mentioned, required in in the case of commercial and within new neighborhoods.
So would y'all give one permit or would you make each individual house pull a different permit?
So it'd be by the contractor, right? If the, if the, if the contractor was.
Or the neighborhood.
Yes. Because essentially, normally a developer would pull the con, you know, and 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 do it and things. So if they're, I'm assuming the neighborhood would use one contractor. The contractor would pull the the permit on behalf of the project, not individual neighbors, but on behalf of the project, and just do it that way.
Bart, turn your mic off. So the citizens can hear.
I don't know what happened. I guess I'm done.
I was trying to end the work session. So to have clarity here, uh, is, is anybody on council, they're looking for direction about the Fennet Project.
So we're not taking a vote, just want to know that if there's anyone who's opposed to the idea.
I I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
It would appear that we are, uh, Mr. Barkoviet, let's just move forward on that.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Can I just say, uh, sidewalk systems are really important in cities now. You know, they 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 provide a lot of, uh, they provide safety for our citizens as 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 they traverse the city, you know, it provides great mobility for our pedestrians, you know. You have people walking, you have people biking now. It's just a thing that's good for good cities, good quality cities now. So whatever we can do to improve our sidewalk system, I would recommend it as a, as a manager for sure in doing that. I think we need some clarity on TDA regulations, uh, what it, what we do in front of schools or to schools. Because I ran into an issue once. We did a great thing. We built a sidewalk to a s- school. And then once we did that, they took away the bus service. And so we had more parents mad at us because the bus service was taken taken away because they had a safer route to school than that. So I just want to make sure staff, we get some clarification on that. So sometimes our best of intentions, no good deed goes unpunished.
I did talk to Todd Coleman, who's in charge of their transportation, and he assured me that there was nothing that we would do with sidewalks that would affect their rubric, that would change the bus service for the kids in Beaumont. So we're we're okay there, and he is very excited to hear that that we were working on that.
Thank you. I think you have direction.
All right, thank you.
All right, at this point, we're gonna have council members co- uh, public comment, and I'll start to my left over here with Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say to Emily Wheeler and her staff, phenomenal job at the Christmas tree lighting and great turnout from the community. I was amazed at the event and uh, just great for the city. And I appreciate Emily and all the employees of the city that made that night happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Turner.
Sorry, it's been a while. I have a few notes, Mayor. The traffic coming policy, we're talking about sidewalks. I think it's a good time to kind of look at us getting an update on the traffic coming policy with certain neighborhoods who may want a petition for speed bumps or whatever to that magnitude. I think if those citizens can show that they want it and we can find a way to accommodate it, I would like to be in big support of that. Funding for a facade program in lower mortal income areas. I know we identified some money that we were gonna use for certain projects that didn't come through. I just want to know if we have some of that revenue left over. Can we look at that? I know uh, we spoke about it earlier and just see if maybe the council may have an interest in it. If not, that's fine. I just don't want to leave any revenue just sitting on the shelf that can go into improving our community. I want to thank staff for looking at the private firm to come out and look at the water meters, we've got quite a few complaints. And for staff to make the initiative to go out and get someone private to look at it and be transparent, I want to let you guys know I do appreciate that. Do we have a specific timeline on the bus stop being relocated from the senior citizen facility on Lucas? I know me and Councilmember Samuel sat with some citizens roughly about a year ago about moving that bus stop. They even went to the magnitude of bringing a whole petition down from everybody who lived in that area. I just kind of wanted to see if we had an update uh, on where we are with that and can we get a timeline? Because I think it'd be real feasible for us to communicate with those citizens on what the timeline would be. And thanks for the, another thing is thanks to staff for the veterans uh, proposal today. We spoke up, y'all brought it to us as well as the tourists. And lastly, I just, just out of curiosity, with Tech Dot and Energy, can staff tell us, tell us either privately or publicly, when the last time we did get approved from a grant from either one of those two entities? And I think it's important we kind of track that and keep up with it.
We've, we've been uh, very successful with their highway safety improvement program with Tech Dot. So and uh, this allowed me to promote your uh, looking at the Public Works monthly report. We added a grant section to the back of that report. It's, it's in the late 20 to 30, somewhere in there in the report. And it outlines every grant that Public Works has put in for, whether we got it or not. And then if we got it, you know, where where we're at in in progress on that. But but we've got um, I I think several million dollars, two to three million for adaptive signaling from the Highway Safety Improvement Program. It's just unfortunate that Transportation Alternatives, they had four to five times more requests than they had money in in the program. It was very popular for people to put in for.
Don't forget about Energy too, okay? Thank you.
We've gotten, we've got some streetlights from Energy in the past, and we've gotten some building grants for replacing lighting. I know um, I know the lights on the freeways were probably four years ago, but we have gotten money from Energy as well.
Just want to stay on them. Thank you.
Councilman Getz.
At the last city council meeting, there was an agenda item to discuss renaming the Beaumont Municipal Tennis Center to the Allison Getz Municipal Tennis Center pursuant to Section 14.07.004 of Ordinance 23.082, as adopted by the Beaumont City Council on October 31st, 2023. What was supposed to happen was the city council was to decide whether an ad hoc committee is necessary or if the request should fall under the purview of an existing city board, commission, or committee. That's all that was supposed to happen at the November 21st, 2023 meeting. But even prior to that, the ordinance required the city manager to direct the letter to the appropriate city department for review by staff. Pursuant to the ordinance, staff was required to evaluate, one, the requester's proposal and consideration of the stated policy and purpose of the ordinance; two, the impact on public safety; and three, the financial impact for changing signs, plaques, and markers. on public safety; and three, the financial impact for changing signs, plaques, and markers. Upon completion of staff review, staff was required to refer the naming suggestion and staff's recommendation to the appropriate city board, commission, or committee, or where applicable, the ad hoc committee created for the naming request, if so created, or to the city council. Ms. Reed, did I state all that correctly?
Yes, sir, I believe so, with one exception. I believe that the requirement to send it to staff is only after council rescinds it to a board or commission. So I didn't know if that was, if that was made clear, but yes, sir, that's the ordinance.
Okay. Well, none of that happened. Instead, the mayor hijacked the topic in an orchestrated maneuver to steer discussion in such a manner that no committee or staff input would be had, completely ignoring the language of the ordinance and the recommendations of the city attorney. Since that meeting, other citizens have come forward with the letters to the city clerk, also requesting that the Beaumont Municipal Tennis Center be renamed to the Allison Getz Municipal Tennis Center. And rather than follow the language of the naming ordinance, the mayor and/or the city manager, or both, have chosen to ignore the procedures required by the ordinance and not even consider the requests made by other citizens in addition to myself. Properly enacted city ordinances are in fact laws that govern conduct in the city of Beaumont. When the word "shall" is included in an ordinance, it means that the conduct described is mandatory. It is not optional if the mayor finds it inconvenient or bothersome. We all took an oath to uphold the laws of the state of Texas and this ordinance, which is a law in the state of Texas, and it has not been upheld. The question is, why has there been such an effort made to deny this honor to one of the most extraordinary public servants that has ever served the city of Beaumont and Jefferson County? A woman as president of 17 local nonprofit organizations in her lifetime, including the Beaumont Children's Museum, the Symphony of Southeast Texas, the Beaumont Heritage Society, the Southeast Texas Tennis Association, Garth House, and so many more. A person that became the first Jewish woman to hold a countywide elected position in Jefferson County history. A woman that became the first public information officer in Jefferson County history, performing those duties in addition to her duties as tax assessor collector. A woman that was named by her peers as the tax collector of the year for the entire state of Texas in 2021 because of innovations and modernizations that she made to her office since her initial election in 2014. I know that for most of my fellow council members, that you know, in your heart, that Allison is worthy of this honor, especially given her love for the sport of tennis and her leadership in developing the additions and improvements to the Beaumont Municipal Tennis Center. So why is there such recalcitrance amongst the council for honoring Allison Getz? The answer, I have discovered, is because there's a small number of small-minded vindictive people that oppose the name of Getz being on any municipal building. These people have such a hatred of Mike Getz that they cannot even distinguish that the person proposed to be honored is not myself, but Allison Getz, an individual whose life's accomplishments far overshadow anything that I have ever achieved or could ever hope to achieve. Allison was her own person, and anybody that does not understand or believe that never knew Allison. Since the meeting of November 21, 2023, hundreds, if not thousands of people, including other elected officials, have publicly called for the name of the Beaumont Municipal Tennis Center to be changed to the Allison Getz Municipal Tennis Center. Resolutions of support have been received from the Board of Directors of Temple Emmanuel and the Southeast Texas Tennis Association. To let a few hate-filled vindictive people govern your actions and refusing to give Allison this honor in view of the torrent of public support is a slap in their face and an abdication of your representative responsibilities. And for those of you that say that this is just a matter of timing, I will quote the immortal words of Rabbi Hillel, "If not now, when?" Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Durio.
Oh, yes. First, thank you, staff, for getting that veterans' bus pass deal done. Appreciate that, and I know the veterans will also, piggyback on what Councilman Fellshaw said about the Christmas tree lighting ceremony and the Christmas dinner and the turnout, it was great. Also, on the sidewalk project, appreciate that's something we've been trying to get done, and I'm glad that we're finally getting started on that. Also, I want, staff want to see if we could look into finding some other option on the red tag buildings other than having them go to court to get a T R O, if they could come and, I don't know, figure something out, because sometimes they just, really just don't have enough time, or they run out of money, or they have good intentions, and they'll put money into it and then their time will run out, and then we end up demolishing a house that's been worked on. So if we could have some other, some other option other than them having to spend anywhere up to $1,000 or $1,200 to go to get a T R O, you know, and that money can be spent, actually spent fixing on the house. So I would like to see if staff could look into giving these folks some other option on that. And, oh, and also, staff, I've been getting a lot of calls, and when I call, you guys are very responsive to changing those street signs out. So some of them, you know, if you just ride around, you can't see them at night, and one phone call, and usually, man, the citizens are very thankful and happy for that. You know, you guys are very responsive about that and about when they calling in for streetlights, getting that done also, and I appreciate it as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Councilman Fellshaw.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't want to banter back and forth this afternoon over this issue of naming the building after Allison. Again, there's never a question in my mind about Allison's qualification, but there was a reference made to the timing issue, and I think that now is the time for me to clarify that. And that council meeting here a couple of weeks ago, when I made that comment, I was not at liberty at that time to qualify my statement, but now I am. That morning, I was contacted by the Nathan family, and they asked me, or they communicated to me that the Nathan family does not support this, and they were asking the council not to do it. But it was requested that I not mention that at the time, so out of respect to them, I made the comment, the timing's not right, knowing that there needed to be time for the Nathan family and the Getz family to work out whatever differences they may have. It's uncomfortable for the council to be placed in the middle of a family dispute. But after that council meeting and hearing the outcry from the community, I was contacted again by the Nathan family, and I was given permission, if confronted with that issue, to clarify it. And so here today, to the community and to Councilman Getz, let me say again, it has nothing to do with Allison's qualifications. It only has to do with the fact that the Nathan family has asked me, and I know other council members, not to support this. So this is an issue for the family. Allison's passing is just recent. It is a time for grieving and recognition of her, but typically, when you go to name buildings, you wait a while before you do that. There's time. But for me, for now, the timing is not right. Will I ever support it? I can't speak to that now, but what I can speak today is the timing is not right, the Nathan family has asked that we pause, and that's what I did. And so it's unfortunate that this council's in this position, but it is, and just wanted to clarify that, because I understand there were those who were wondering, what did Fellshaw mean by timing? That was part of it, that the Nathan family had asked me not to support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Attorney, any, any comments?
It's Christmas. Yay. So fun fact, the tree lighting and the holiday party inside the event center were two different departments, and they both did a fantastic job, and we did an amazing job outside with the tree lighting, and Jackie Gunner, and our human resource department was the mastermind behind our wonderful festive events inside, and so those ladies did an amazing job, and thank you to them for that. And that is all. Merry Christmas.
Mayor, just want to echo the comments about the tree lighting. I thought it was a wonderful event with Emily Wheeler and her, her staff, and I'd like to wish Emily a happy birthday, since it's her birthday, and then also complimenting HR on the, the event for the city facilities. And also, we did receive, regarding the question about the bus shelter on Lucas being moved to Pine Street, we did receive an update from Building Services on that yesterday, so we can provide a copy of that to council.
I also want to thank HR for the wonderful dinner that we celebrated for Christmas, and also the tree lighting. It seems like it gets more and more turnout every year, and this year, I think, was the biggest we've had since we started, so it was amazing. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
I'd like to add to that, I'd like to thank all city employees for all the work they've done for the holiday season. It's a lot of work. We helped people decorate our bowls and streets and medians, et cetera, you know, tree lightings, et cetera. So I'd like to thank all of them as a team effort. But I'd like to also give a shout out to the legal department for decorating the tree out in the atrium. It looks beautiful, so our city attorney and her staff took that task on, and it looks great, fantastic. Thank you, Sheri.
He stole my thunder. I was going to say, thank you, Legal, for the beautiful Christmas tree decoration.
If I learned nothing else, is never comment on how the Christmas tree looks, because that's volunteering. But we had a lot, we had a lot of fun. So yes, thank you to my staff indulging me for getting us voluntold to decorate the Christmas tree. We underestimated how big that tree is. It's a big tree, but it came out really nice. So thank you to my, my office staff for helping decorate, Ms. Jerry, Marissa, Stephanie, and Lauren. You guys are great.
Well, and I want to echo to, to our staff, who has really showed up in a big way for the holiday season and have decorated the city, and certainly with the event, the tree lighting last Wednesday night and the employee dinner as well. It was, it was a wonderful evening, and the weather was very Christmas-like, and certainly, it's a privilege to be mayor in this wonderful city. And over the last few weeks, I've gotten to go by on several organizations that have gave away turkeys and chickens and other foods, as recently as this past weekend, and we have an incredibly generous community that is always kind and showing up for those that are in need and do a great job of, of broadcasting that across the community, and I'm grateful for that. Had a wonderful symphony this past Sunday, too, and certainly, it is the holiday season and lots of parties, and I just want to remind everybody to be safe when they're driving this time of year, as with all times of the year. And I'm not going to say Merry Christmas yet, because we have a few more meetings, but I want you to be in this holiday season and enjoy it. At this point, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.